Public hearing in action on a proposed resolution adopting the Rock Renaissance area redevelopment and implementation strategy arise. Fire Resolution 2015-1172, Mr. Sherrick.
Thank you, Dwayne Sherrick, planning, manager of planning services for the city of Janesville. Staff, the administration would like to thank the council for the opportunity to present the Rock Renaissance area redevelopment and implementation strategy known as ARISE to you this evening. With me this evening is Bruce Morrow. Bruce is a lead planning consultant from the firm of SAA Design Group in Madison. Bruce played an instrumental role in leading the effort to assist the city in the preparation of this document. This evening, what we'd like to do is provide a brief overview presentation of the ARISE plan. We know that for the last year, there has been considerable effort within the community to put this plan together and arrive at the recommendations and particularly the implementation section of this plan. So without further ado, we'd like to kick that off. We'll do it jointly and then look forward to any questions you have. And again, just a reminder, we do have a public hearing scheduled for review of this item. Thanks, Bruce.
Hi, thanks again. It's been great working with the city on this project and it's always good to end in a strong point, too. So the first thing we'd like to talk about is just a little bit that this project was funded through a brownfield grant by EPA. And it's a different type of grant than most brownfield grants. Most brownfield grants are used to clean up. This one is used to try to stimulate investment so you can get redevelopment dollars. So the idea is that you're trying to redevelop the site or redevelop something near the site that will cause this site to be, wanted to be cleaned up and redeveloped. So it's just a different approach. It's more of a holistic approach instead of let's just remove this stuff. It's how we can plan to actually turn it into some good dollars, not just a empty lot that's clean. We based our plan off of a lot of previous studies that have been done. These are just a list of the activity that's been happening in downtown Janesville area over the last few years. This is a different animal, really. It's a strategy and approach. It's not necessarily a plan, per se. These are all focused on some near-term action items, so it's all site-specific. Instead of the general all-plan, we looked at all the individual sites and we looked at these, what actions would be necessary to redevelop that site? So it's not necessarily, like I said, the site itself. So if we needed to get a road into a site to make the site more desirable, that'd be an example of how that would work. Of course, to make any plan successful, you really need the input of the public and we had great input from the public. A lot of our meetings had over 70 people at them and we continue to see very familiar faces in this crowd even today. So we've been doing this for almost a year right now. So we've had good input. We've had good press on it. There's been a lot of articles in the magazines. We've had a website that has been up that people can look at the articles, look at the plans. We had the DRC that was acted as our, kind of our steering committee that was involved. Also, staff was heavily involved with the process also. And we had stakeholder groups that we interviewed to find out what their needs and desires were and along with the public that I mentioned, the four meetings, community output. And with those groups, we developed goals. And what was interesting is we had a pretty consistent group of goals of people. Everyone was, good consensus. I'm not saying there wasn't any outliers, but we had a pretty strong consensus, which was really nice. I think there's a lot of excitement and momentum to move downtown forward, which is really, not a lot of naysayers, which is really nice to have. These are our goals that we set up for the plan. One of it was to make downtown a vibrant spot. We have this downtown goal to keep authentic Janesville. What is the essence of Janesville? We wanted our plan to represent that and continue to grow on that. There's a lot of great assets in Janesville. One of probably the predominant physical asset would be the river, just because of the size and how it connects all six sites, but there are very large number of other assets, including the people of Janesville itself, which is probably really the main asset. We also wanted to facilitate investment downtown, these action-oriented strategies to get the ball rolling. That was one of the things people want to do, is not just a plan to set on the shelf, how can we get moving? And Dwayne will talk about that at the end of this. So what's our strategy? So one thing about a strategy is it's more of approach. You're going to see some pictures of ideas and things that happen and those ideas are representation of what can happen. What actually happens is market-driven. So we're trying to remember, get developers going and investment. So what we show isn't actually what the market may kind of bend and twist and turn. It's the general idea of what we want to have happen and that the public wants to have happen. So the actual outcome isn't going to look exactly like this. It's going to look better, right? Because it will work better. So we had these big picture ideas. One of our big picture things was to look at the north and Traxler Park and expand that and connect that to the city, activate the Rock River somehow, how to activate the Main Streets. We have the West Milwaukee Streets, kind of retail area. We have the entertainment along Main Street and then the, kind of the cultural core down there with J-PAC. We wanted to develop a brand for the downtown, which is the downtown square where the parking deck is. We all know the parking deck has to go away because the DNR won't let us keep it, so we really don't have a choice about that activity. We want to make the network better so we could provide a more walkable community with the river walks that would help bring people downtown. And from our market study, we found out that the best sort of investment appeared to be housing opportunities. There was a desire for more increased housing options downtown. So I'm going to buzz through these options because a lot of people have seen these already and we want to get to questions and answers. We can go into more detail if you want to. So Site 1 is basically the parking deck. We wanted to remove the parking deck, turn that into the focal point of the city with some open space where we could have bigger events for the city, build on events that are already taking place. Site 2 is the old jail site where we have some vacant land right now. We have a motivated developer there, some interest in mixed use, some housing. It goes with the market need for housing, so that's kind of more of a housing focus area. Site 3 was Traxler Park. We have a great assets in the Aqua Jays up there. Can we build on the success of the Aqua Jays? We have some land that's in problem there because of the flood zone, so can we make that a bigger green space, create a gateway to the city? Site 4 is more the connection between the downtown and Aqua Jays there. We have the riverwalk. Can we improve that riverwalk to make it function better? Can we put a kayak run in there and activate that river space? Four and five is the parking lot. That's a prime location where we have the parking lot right on the river and on Milwaukee Street, a prime site for a developer. So can we get that a prime mixed use place, maybe some housing on top? There's some talk about hotel if that could be feasible at one time. And finally, Site 6 is a two-block area that would be overlooking the park and overlooks the river, be over the top of the transit facility. And this is kind of where we talk about different uses. So one idea would be it could be mixed use on the one side and some townhouses that would transition to the neighborhoods. But if you had a corporate campus wanting to come in there, a nursing school or something, we have a two-block area, so it could be that. So again, that's kind of market-driven, what can make these actions happen. And Dwayne is going to talk about how we'll make those happen.
That's a high expectation, Bruce, but we'll try. Yeah, the, really, the crux of this plan is an implementation strategy. The EPA grant that we have requires us to identify strategic targeted steps to identify environmental conditions on site and make recommendations on future land uses. But the strategy itself really consists of two components. One is an organizational structure or a framework to guide that process and the other is all of those recommendations for physical improvements. That organizational structure, it really deals with a group of people or folks or interests that will be advocates for change and follow that through. The plan recommends a project management team. The project management team, hard to see over here, but includes individuals from the community that have a vested interest in downtown. Elected officials, city staff, folks from Forward Janesville, downtown business owners, DDA, you know, a broad cross-section of individuals that can share their particular interests, knowledge and expertise in moving some of these initiatives forward. It's also a group that will advocate on behalf of the city to promote, advertise and form partnerships to further act on some of these implementation measures. We'll talk a little bit more about that later this evening because there's another element on the council agenda that gets at what that, you know, what that group will consist of. In terms of facilitating redevelopment and brownfield cleanup, again, our EPA grant requires specific action steps and those are really measures that address the barriers to redevelopment on brownfield sites. We won't get into the whole brownfield definition, but it's those sites that have particular environmental, either known or perceived issues that require additional assistance and effort to promote redevelopment. As far as soliciting development or redevelopment, we want to, we want to use this ARISE plan as a tool to generate development, developer interest and stimulate that private reinvestment. We want to pursue grant funding. We want to coordinate with state and federal and regional agencies. We've had some of those discussions already. We're going to continue those. This plan lays out specific measures for pursuing grant funding opportunities and identifies those agencies that align with some of these improvements. We want to utilize a new revolving loan fund. That's a new program, which is part of our comprehensive brownfields program. We want to coordinate existing plans and policies and program funding. And finally, we want to maintain project momentum by keeping the downtown message alive. So why do we, you know, why do we need this strategy? Why no? There's a couple of reasons, but principally, we have a significant feature in the core of the downtown, as Bruce mentioned, the 50-year-old parking plaza. That structure is deteriorating. We can no longer rehab that structure or extend its life. It needs to come out. And when it comes out, that's, that will inevitably be a dramatic change in the heart of downtown. It's an opportunity. It's an opportunity that for the past 50 years, this community has not seen, meaning exposure to the river and the riverfront. And, you know, what is, what does the community want to see along the river's edge? This plan took that public comment and community input and formulated a proposal for what is known as this town square. So the plaza inevitably is the catalyst of the six catalyst sites. It's going to kickstart the downtown revitalization process because it's going to happen. And not only will that happen, there are a number of other improvements within the next five years that will also occur in the immediate vicinity. We have rehabilitation and streetscape improvements planned for North Main Street, not North Main Street, Main Street from Center Way down to St. Lawrence, starting in just a couple of months, this spring, to be completed in early fall. We have reconstruction, not reconstruction, major rehabilitation of the Milwaukee Street Bridge program for 2018. We have resurfacing of East Milwaukee Street, essentially from Main Street to near the Five Points in that same year. That presents an opportunity to, again, look at the conversion of the one-way street system on Milwaukee to the two-way conversion and other improvements that can come along with that. We have a recently reconstructed South River Street extending from Court Street down to Racine that was completed a year and a half ago. Those are some major improvements. Those are, those are going to make a big change and we want to take advantage of this opportunity to align private redevelopment efforts with those other public infrastructure activities. This notion of the town square also involves, and I'll slip back to the next slide, involves other improvements that Bruce didn't get into, but it prevents, in what we've heard from the community, our opportunities for access to the river, whether that consists of a floating dock or pier, whether that includes a stairway down to the river, to get people closer to the water, to allow them potentially to interact and expand recreational opportunities. When the plaza, when the deck comes out, we'll lose that land bridge connecting the east and the west sides of downtown. Recommendations include a pedestrian bridge that will tie into the backside of the Old Town Plaza, connecting through to the Main Street parking lot on the other side, connecting to, to the Dodge Street extension past the YMCA, linking both sides to one another. We also heard that there's not much green area in the core of downtown. We have an opportunity, and one of the projects I mentioned that, that will occur here this spring is the removal of the 55 and 51 South River Street, former Plaza Furniture Building and Tracy, Tracy Building just to the north. Those will come out. That'll provide openness, access, and the near-term plan is to restore that in green space. Opportunities are coming and this plan looks at how to maximize and take advantage of those things that, that will occur. Ultimately, it's about creating excitement downtown, using the river as a common link amongst many of these sites to transform downtown, to get people downtown, to make it a place where people want to, want to go, want to stay and frequent multiple entertainment venues or businesses. The plan is admittedly very bold and ambitious. There are near-term projects and there are long-term projects and not all of these will likely materialize, but the vision embodied in the plan, I think, holds true. It allows for development proposals to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis to determine whether, you know, those fit in with the guiding principles of this plan. So it's not static. If, if a particular land use is recommended for a site and that changes over time based on, on market conditions, that's okay. What we want to do is make sure that we connect all of these assets along the riverfront and within the downtown to one another so that it's cohesive, so that they play off one another and that private reinvestment continues to flow. Lastly, again, this is unlike other plans in that it presents a very complex set of data and information on the environmental side, on the market analysis side, including physical land use recommendations for multiple sites in the downtown. And we're proud of this document. We're proud of the effort. I think this is renewed and resurging energy that, that is applied in, in the community and, and it's going to start real soon in 2016 with removal of the plaza. So with that, again, a public hearing has been scheduled this evening. Staff is certainly interested in hearing comments from, from folks and, and with that, we're recommending that the council support a resolution, specifically Resolution Number 2015-1172, which would adopt the Rock Renaissance area redevelopment and implementation strategy as a component of the city's comprehensive plan. Thanks.
Excellent presentation. Mr. Assistant City Clerk, would you mind reading the resolution, please?
Resolution Number 2015-1172, a resolution adopting the Rock Renaissance area redevelopment and implementation strategy arise.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this item, please go to either podium. You'll have four minutes. Please state your name and address. Would anyone like to speak to this item?
Andrea Byerman, 339 South Locust Street. Just hear from a lot of the naysayers that I didn't hear the word parking once and that a lot of people believe that the DNR never said that we couldn't repair that parking ramp, just that we couldn't improve it. Parking places, I don't see any.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item, please?
Bill McCoy, 1326 Putnam. With the walkway, that's a walkcross that you're going to put on there, right now, we can't even take care and keep our bridges up. We've got another, we have a bridge down here that's, has to be repaired, which is going to be repaired. We've got another one, is my understanding, out on Center Avenue that has to be repaired. So we need our streets repaired and so you're asking for the government to give us money to help this downtown redevelopment and everything else. Why don't we learn to fix our own streets that we got right now before we go further? That's all I suggest. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item, please?
Travis McConnell, 31 Marshall Place. Basically, as a private investor that continues to put money into downtown Janesville, you know, we're in support of this plan. We think that there's several opportunities for private investment to work together with the city, with the city council, with the city government, you know, with organizations like SAA Associates, you know, and there's more than enough opportunity here for, for things going forward, so.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item, please?
Hi, Mick Gilbertson, 3400 North Edgewood Drive and owner of the armory at 10 South High Street. I did serve on the DRC committee, did work through many of the meetings with this plan. I think this is a good plan to move forward with from the standpoint that it is an implementation strategy. It does have tangible things that are near action term and long action term. You know, as, you know, Dwayne said, some of the questions aren't answered yet and what it will look like and what it will be, but I think this is probably one of the best efforts put forward from the city, from the citizens, from the public as far as moving the downtown forward, particularly to address the, the near-term issues with the parking structure.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item, please?
Tim Barber, 1615 Newport Avenue, Janesville. I also was a participant in the DRC meetings and as I said on the Plan Commission meeting, I'm excited for this day. I think this is a great, it's been a great opportunity for Janesville and I was very happy and proud to be a part of this process. I think it went extremely well. Many of you, as well as many people in the audience, were, were part of those meetings and, and the thing that I found striking at the time of attending all those meetings and participating was how everyone had a very similar mindset, the thought processes, people came together. You know, you look back at those plans that Dwayne had put up on there for many years, even back in the 60s, they're also very similar. You know, everything is talking about pointing towards a river and capitalizing on that natural wonder. So as it was spelled out here so clearly so many times, this is about, this is a strategy. What's going to happen, we don't know, but there are some monumental things, as we've talked about, the parking ramp. I'm not sure any of us can really comprehend how much of a difference that's going to make when that comes out. It's going to completely change that center area and I think that's really an exciting thing. There are some really great ideas that are proposed in this plan as well as others in the, in the past, but those are some very exciting things and I'm really looking forward to seeing what we can do. I think everybody in this room realizes money's an issue, but I think that if the public and the private sectors work together, everybody has the common goal and I think that has been extremely clear through the same process. You know, for years and years, the city has been going and buying, trying to acquire property along that river to open it up for this specific purpose. I think all eyes and ears are going to be peeled for any kind of grants and I think the more we can work together and communicate and try and maximize those dollars and leverage those dollars like you had with the bus facility, that's great for Janesville and I think we all have those intentions. So I'm looking forward to being able to capitalize on some of those opportunities. You know, in fact, we have a group going to Washington this week and some of you are going to be attending that and that's one of the, one of the functions of that is go and talk to our legislatures and see what we can do. And maybe we don't have an opportunity today, but we want to build those relationships and we have opportunities tomorrow and the day after and that's very important for this process. It's going to take us some time. Now is not the time to back off of this plan. Now is the time to keep moving ahead and I think this, this step needs to happen so we can get it into the next phase. So I'm very excited about what will come. Other than that, I want to thank all of you for all the time because many of you are on multiple different committees, but thank you for the time and participating in this process. I think it was a great process and, and as I said, I'm excited to see what's going to happen in the future because I think we've got some really great things coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Hello, Britten Graff, 211 Jacmin Street. I'm also here as the Chair of the Downtown Development Alliance and I was also on the DRC Committee. I think there is a great need to implement this strategy that we have come up with through the DRC and it's ARISE plan. It really gives a guideline for development. There's lots of capital improvement projects that we've talked about during the presentation that within the next five years, the parking plaza removal, Milwaukee Street Bridge, the Milwaukee Street resurfacing, they're huge capital, public investment and we need to pair that with private investment as well. This really lays the groundwork for really encouraging public-private partnerships that will be so instrumental in getting a lot of these projects pushed through. There are of course the things in this implementation strategy that I don't believe will happen, but I think the strategy is so important for so many important things to happen from this plan. I think the historic architecture is one of our greatest assets in the downtown and this plan really does encourage the redevelopment of these historic buildings. The DDA will play a role, of course, in promoting components of the strategy. We will partner with other groups and organizations. I think that it's really important for us to utilize all the assets we do have in the downtown already, including J-PAC, the library, YMCA, the Historical Society Campus that's just outside of the downtown, all the municipal buildings, courthouse and entertainment districts, as well as Traxler Park and the new Marv Roth Pavilion. I am also here as someone that is involved with a very large investment project right in the corner of Court and Main Street that is part of Site 1. I do believe that is important for parking to stay in the forefront, to make sure that we do have parking for all these investment projects that we want to bring to the downtown. It's also important to look at the larger picture and not just these small components. So I think having this plan that goes over six catalyst sites is a really important thing to move all these projects forward. I know the design for our project was based on these plans from the ARISE strategy and we are orienting our building towards the river in hopes that it will spur other projects to start and do the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Good evening, John Beckett from Forward Janesville and 1829 Royal Oaks. It's kind of refreshing to see some real bold thinking about downtown. Having been part of not one, but two, but three of these, these planning processes, this particular plan, I think, has by far the best chance of seeing some, some results. So congratulations to the city and the staff on the whole process and a couple of threads I'll try to expand on that haven't been covered, but as Britten just said, she made a decision to invest in that property on the premise that some of the plans and some of the things that were going to take place around this, this area right here will actually happen. And that's an important thread to keep in mind because as business people look at what might be done with a property or what sort of investment might be made, they have to have some confidence that what they're putting their money into plays into this overall strategy. We've made it abundantly clear that not everything is magically going to happen over the next couple of years, but if they can look downstream five to 10 years and, and start to see some of these, these, these changes being made, I predict you're going to see some momentum build. That train will start leaving the, the station. I talked to Travis just last week and he was excited about plans for some of his properties and what might be done, some real substantial investment there. It's people like Travis and Britten and others that are going to put real private investment capital on the table if they see the city following through on these plans. So the onus, I think, is on the public sector to do their part and, eh, pull along the private sector, if you will. My final point is something I've written about and talked to many of you about and this relates to the broader picture of our local economy. Mark has talked about how we need more investment in real estate in this community to... Mark has talked about how we need more investment in real estate in this community to get the new revenue from real growth and that is abundantly true and as you struggle with budget issues, you're going to wish you had several million more dollars' worth of taxable property to draw those tax dollars from. But when I talk to businesspeople every week and they look longer-term about growing their companies here, the one thread that comes out all the time is they're really worried about the demographic trends in this state where the retiree population overwhelms the supply of new labor. And then it comes to critical technical skills and highly skilled people in management, IT, engineering, and the like. The expectation is that new talent will have lots of choices, lots of choices. So the communities that win are the communities that have invested in such a way to make them really attractive places to live. Downtown is not the only variable. Schools, parks, safety, all those things play into that formula, but if the heart of your community looks down on its luck, you're not really putting your best foot forward when it comes to attracting that talent. And that's not just young professionals, those are young families and the people that fill the seats in the schoolhouses and the like. So if you want to, just for a minute, take that longer-term view, this isn't just about being pretty and nice, it's also a strategic investment in making this a viable and vital economic community longer-term. So I hope you'll keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item, please?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Voskell. I reside at 3417 Amherst Road. Thank you for the opportunity to share continued support of the Rock Renaissance Area Development and Implementation Strategy, finally, fondly referred to as Arise. As a team member of the Downtown Revitalization Committee, our work sessions helped us shape the Arise Strategies, Goals, Desired Outcomes, and put forth a recommended approach to downtown revitalization. Arise has fostered momentum and engagement. It is a plan that has been evaluated with underlying principles and action steps. It is important to know the plan is one which will be flexible and market-driven. The Rock Renaissance Area encompasses approximately 240 acres within the city's central business district extending from the Memorial Bridge south to the Jackson Street Bridge along both sides of the Rock River. The Rock River is a natural feature that can and should be used as an economic development generator and bring a variety of different activities to downtown Janesville. Arise is the first step in an ongoing process to ensure a vibrant, sustainable, eco-friendly downtown embraced by and beautifully landscaped by a wonderful amenity known as the Rock River. Please adopt Resolution 2015-1172, excuse me, the Rock Renaissance Area Redevelopment and Implementation Strategy or Arise. Also, regarding Council Policy 92, please consider retention of the Downtown Revitalization Committee. Council members, downtown associations, Forward Janesville, businesses, citizens, are all critical team members and champions of this significant renewal effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item, please? Would anyone else like to speak to this item? I'll close the public hearing. Wishes of the council. Mr. Markline.
I think this is a really positive step forward for the city of Janesville and a positive step forward for our residents and also for our private industries. As Duane's report pulled out, the city's going to do their part over the next four or five years with five city projects that will be working to improve the downtown and fix what we have in the words of Bill McCoy. We'll be redoing Main Street starting in a few months, as Duane said. Milwaukee Street and the Milwaukee Street Bridge are priorities that'll be coming in the near future. The parking plaza removal will be here in the near future and the plaza furniture and the Tracy Building will be razed and a park area will be created. Five major civic investments that fix what we have and hopefully will kickstart this Rock Renaissance that we're hoping for with this plan and it is a plan and a strategy. The second part is also be time for the private sector to put their money where their support is. City is doing their part. It's also time for the private sector to pick up on these improvements and take the leap, keep the momentum moving forward as we go. The other one to look at this, if you're looking just at the dollars on it, is the cost and benefits of these improvements versus the cost and benefits of doing nothing. And I believe Mr. Becker said it best, we have a growing city, we need to attract and retain our children to want to live here. If we let this downtown go and do nothing, it will go. It'll go down. It will not get better and the cost of bringing it back in the future will be a lot more than we even realize right now. I think we're at a very important, critical point to move forward on this one here. The other one is any public funds that we do down here will have to be approved by future city councils, so you're not giving us a blank check. Passing this plan is not a blank check to go forward. Everything will be vetted and discussed and gone forward. There were some concerns mentioned about parking, the proverbial parking, I think it's just like the chicken and the egg. Do we have enough or do we not have enough? Think on this one here, the options have been identified in this plan where future parking can go and if the private sector is successful and does make these investments and we find that we're hurting for parking, I think the city councils and the administration will be right there to supply the parking. It would be a great problem to have, to need more parking from that. I have a few concerns on the plan and probably the biggest one is the land use rights of the current owners of these ones, of these projects and what their future land use considerations would be if their desires are contrary to the desires of the plan. It's sort of like any comprehensive plan. This is just a plan. It probably will not look like this when it's done. I believe any property owner that wishes to improve their property should be encouraged to do so and this will be a great blueprint to show them what it could be and what, if they opened up and go bold, what it might be, but ultimately it will be their decision on which they want to do with their own property and that'll be something to consider, but we're all in this together, we're all citizens in this community and hopefully we'll work together. Something else that's not addressed in here, and I just got today a copy of the 2008 plan that Jack Messer had prepared on truck traffic on Main Street. I think that's an ongoing problem for this city. It has been for many years. It's a simple request to stop it. I do not think there is a simple solution to the problem, though, but I would like to see, look at what we could do when we make a really nice Main Street and a nice Milwaukee Street and if this plan goes through with, up by Traxler Park rerouting channel or Highway 51, that we can find a way to minimize truck traffic coming right down through this pedestrian-friendly area. And then, where's number seven? That is number seven. I do have one little semantic thing in our list of goals. It lists the Rock River as Janesville's greatest asset. I think the Rock River is definitely important for this, but I think Janesville's greatest asset is its residents and its citizens and I will ask if we make a motion on this, that we get a little semantic and delete that and just say that the Rock River is important, but the greatest asset is not the river. It's our citizens for that. I do think it's a great plan and it's been a long time coming. I appreciate all the citizens that we met at all the meetings and put their input in and the people on the DRC that worked very hard to bring this to realization, so it's a start and hopefully it'll, in my lifetime, I'll see some of this come true. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leibert.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Council Member Markline. I think you said it beautifully, you hit a lot of the key points on the head, so I'll just follow up with saying thank you to everyone here who put a lot of work and input. Private citizens, the private sector, and the government working together, I think, is the perfect trifecta for moving things forward. I think too often people think, why doesn't the government do this? Why doesn't the private sector do this? And I think you're seeing kind of a perfect storm right now with all these groups coming together to do this. So as the self-appointed young person on the council, I just have to say I'm really excited about this. You know, growing up in Janesville, I just so often would hear, I can't wait to leave Janesville, I can't wait to go to Madison, I can't wait to go to Milwaukee. And then when I visit those friends now, they've got young families, they've got college degrees and they're earning a decent salary. A lot of them are living in Milwaukee's downtown or they're living in Chicago's downtown or Logan Square somewhere where young people are moving into the inner city again because there are colleges, there's businesses, there's coffee shops that they can go to, there's, you know, riverways that they can walk their baby in the carriage and just spend time. And I think, you know, in 10 years, if we had something similar to what was going on in some of these other communities, a lot of those people won't say, I can't wait to move out of Janesville, they'd say, you know, I can't wait to move downtown and get an apartment and go to Blackhawk or Whitewater or Urock and stay here and stay in the city, spend their money and raise their families. And so I'm really excited at the prospect. It's not perfect, but I think you have to have a map if you know where you're driving to and I think this is a great first start and I'll plan on voting yes once there's a motion. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll jump in here next. I think Mr. Markline, Mr. Leibert did an excellent job, stole some of my comments, although I didn't come up with self-appointed young person, so I'll give you that one until you, Sam. I just think there's a lot of thanks that need to be presented to not only the folks in this room, but others who have done a lot of work, a lot of time, done a lot of sacrifice to get to where we're at today. So I just simply have to say thank you. Thank you to all of you who have done this hard, hard work. Many of us will benefit on what the work that you've done and the sacrifices you've made, so I say thank you for what you've done. I would agree with you, Sam. I think it's a roadmap. If you're going on a trip, you plan on going any distance, there's probably going to be a detour here, a detour there, but you find a way to get there. You recalibrate, you move forward. So again, thank you to everybody who's done a great job. I will wholeheartedly support this. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you. I attended a seminar a couple of years ago and there were some cities such as Dubuque, Iowa, Rockford, Illinois, and several other areas that have done a lot with their downtowns, took downtowns that were very stagnant such as Janesville and have done a lot with them. And I know we can do the same thing. We have the determination and the will and the creativity, we can do it as well. We don't have to be second-rate. So I support this plan. I go downtown a lot, my wife and I do. I'm retired, so I have more time to go down there, but I really like going down there, but I'd like to have more places to go down there to visit and to walk down there. So I fully support this plan. I think as time goes on, there'll be some revisions as there is to every plan, but I think it's a great first step. I believe this will happen and we'll see this in the next few years, but it will take all of us to work together on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell. Anyone else, please? Mr. Fitzgerald.
I voted on this in the Plan Committee and I will also be voting for it tonight. I also wanted to thank everyone on the committee, everyone at SAA that helped pull this all together. I don't think there's a real appreciation for just how much is involved in trying to tackle a project this size, but thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Markline.
I'd like to move to adopt file Resolution Number 2015-1172, adopting the Rock Renaissance Area Redevelopment and Implementation Strategy, also known as Arise. Document dated February 10th, 2015, as a component of the City of Janesville Comprehensive Plan and Minor Housekeeping Take Janesville's Greatest Asset Out because that is our residents.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Anything else, Mr. Markline?
I think I've said enough.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Nothing further.
Anyone else? Mr. Bobzine.
Thank you. I started going to those meetings that the Arise people put together as a citizen, continued as a council member, and I got to tell you, it was very, very exciting being at those meetings. Those first couple of meetings where people were just throwing out ideas, Historic Janesville, open up the river, and it's all come together and that's very exciting. And everybody's mentioned thanking the committee. Well, this is the committee and I'm going to name them all because they deserve it. Matt Keely, Sam Leibert, Britton Graff, John Beckard, Neil Dupree, Deb Dongera Adams, Mick Gilbertson, Rich Gruber, Jeff Hayscamp, Larry Squire, Sherry Stumpf, Kathy Voskell, Tim Weber, Steve Warner, and Rick Whederson, along with city staff and SAA. These people did a fantastic job and if you've read the Arise document, it addresses everything that people have been concerned about. It addresses parking, it addresses public housing, it addresses retail. I think it's very exciting and I'm glad I'm here at this time in Janesville's history. So I'm all for it. Let's vote.
Good, thank you. Anyone else, please? If not, please vote. And that item passes 6-0. Thank you very much.